Okay, item two, Bicycle Master Plan Presentation. I know Commissioner Shof and Lambert, you wanted this, I also wanted this, and let me kind of set the tone. I think it's important, Commissioners, that we get a level set on what's going on with our Bicycle Master Plan, the implementation strategy, et cetera. Because I want to avoid, to the extent possible, that as we begin rolling out phases of the master plan, that we will, inevitably, we will encounter blowback. But I also want us to be able to keep each project in perspective, and also want to make sure there is a commitment to the plan as a whole, and we need to have that conversation, we need to have that discussion. So I want the instructed staff to put together a presentation on the master plan as a whole to come, and let's discuss it, and make sure there's still buy-in as a commission, so that we will have that level set as we begin to implement particular projects. Commissioners, Madam President, Commissioner Lambert, did you want to add anything as to why you felt this was an appropriate conversation at this time? Madam President, Commissioner Lambert?
Mayor, I appreciate you saying a level set. I think that the thing I think of when asking for this to come forward was that we helped build consensus amongst our community and our neighborhoods, and I think we all want to move forward, and we want to do, you know, what's right for the city, but I think that we need to make sure we communicate well and manage expectations along the way. So thank you for this presentation.
Very good, okay. Thank you. And Wynne, I did receive some unfortunate news. I understand you will be leaving us next month, so I wanted to publicly thank you for all of your contributions over the years to the city, and wish you nothing but the best going forward. And I also wanted to observe that you've got the Camilla Harris footwear on. You've got your Chuck Taylors, I noticed, right?
Yeah, I wanted to impress you guys with my outfit today also.
Well, you know, I was wanting to impress you with my knowledge that Chuck Taylors were the cool thing, according to my wife, she educated me on that. But in all seriousness, we do appreciate everything you've done for the city, and wish you nothing but the best going forward.
Thank you so much. Can everybody hear me okay, or is it a little muzzled? Yes, no?
It's muzzled.
No problem. Better?
Much better.
Thank you so much for having me here today. The mayor and senior staff has asked me to put together a presentation. I'll be really recapping the purpose and need of the Bicycle Master Plan as it is our transportation plan for the city, and then ultimately, a walk through the steps that the city and staff went through back in 2017 to adopt this comprehensive plan. So ultimately, when we look at the reason why, why do we have to have a Bicycle Master Plan, and really to really develop long-range objectives that's not only consistent with our safety goals, but providing wider choices for all user of ages and ability. So we're really talking about equity, and how we connect equitable, you know, modes of transportation into our job placements on our core downtown facility. The other very, very important thing that we have to consider is we do have a comprehensive plan that we have to be consistent with, and this is directly out of our comprehensive plans. There's more sections to this, but I only summarize a few policy, and more specifically, Policy 2.4.4A, "The city shall adopt a pedestrian and bicycle master plan to complete the major system." So this is also very important for us to stay consistent with our plan. Prior to 2017, and there was no transportation plan, there was no Bicycle Master Plan. So if you guys can remember, back then, there were a lot of major efforts for us to be consistent with our mobility and improving our infrastructures. So there are quite a bit of benefits to having a bicycle facilities in general, transportation plan in our city. There's a lot of economics benefits that tie into having a bike network itself. Not only that, you don't have to look too far away, but this is an example from central Florida. They have, you know, primarily focused on building a trail network that has pumped over $42 million into the economy itself. I myself has personally utilized some of those facilities and seen some of the connections that, as a result of this. In addition to that, there's been a lot of increase in property value because of having bicycle network. And if we looked at values of homes, and just in comparison of what we've done in the past, this past couple of years, and then if we give it enough time, let's say three years from now, look at a five-year result, you can see that the majority of property value will increase based on our improvements in investment into those infrastructure itself. And then, of course, it's other health benefits. As you know, right now, the health industry, it's very focused on the COVID-19 and the pandemic, but if you look back in 2017, 2018, what's really killing Americans are heart diseases. And that's really, and you see that more in the lower-income neighborhoods than you do in more affluent neighborhoods. So it's very important for us to provide facilities, especially in those areas in need. And so you're probably thinking, oh, well, it's COVID, and so we've been hunkered down since March of this year, and although we miss the interaction of humans and other human beings, what we've seen is that there has been an increase in bike sales nationally. Locally, we've seen it, bike sales nationally, you know, there's been an increase of over three times as much. So this is really important. If you look back into 20 years ago, or even 50 years ago, people tends to walk and bike before they drive autonomous vehicles or electric vehicles. And I know we're moving into the future, but we also have to think of our basic, back to basic. And then, more importantly, it's the safety benefits that having connected facilities bring to the city. And we look at just how other cities, and these other data have been such a success story. We know that within the city of West Palm Beach, that the highest crashes, those highest networks crashes, does not have bike facilities itself. So there are safety benefits, and it is consistent with our Vision Zero policy itself. Okay? And then lastly, I think it's what we really need to understand is, especially east of I-95 in the city of West Palm Beach, we're a gridded network, we're out of space. So the idea of increasing capacity, what we think of how to move people in a certain amount of space, is very limited. So we have to find very creative ways on how we can transport people and goods in less space than what we have. And that's really looking at transit priority, and also multimodal improvements such as bike-ped improvements. So we, just to recap, this is what we started in 2017. You can see a picture of Chris Rook right there biking through our downtown. We got together with a team of stakeholders and our staff, and we really inventory the entire city. These are, you know, not only staff, but professionals, and really our stakeholders, biking every back-end road, and to determine what is the feasibility of that network. And then, after we collected some baseline data, we did put together a public engagement strategy, which we hosted three charrettes that I can go into more detail in a little bit. We once, we developed a website, we had TV interviews, even the Palm Beach Post had written articles about our bike network. And so with all of this effort, we did work together with the mobility study and the Okeechobee Corridor Study. And I don't know if many of you Commissioners were here during that time, but that was the largest public engagement that we've had in the city up to this date. We had over 700 people that attended over a three-day event. So that's very good engagement for us.
Hold on, Wynne, we have a question. Commissioner Lambert?
Yes. Sorry, I don't know if it's, I'm right under the air, but it is hard to hear you, if you don't mind just speaking up a little bit more.
I will get close soon.
So sorry. Thank you, I want to make sure I hear it all.
Okay, of course. So in addition to our public engagement strategy that we worked with the Downtown Mobility Study and the Okeechobee Corridor Study, we also held three public meetings, which are listed here, and each meeting, for example, we held at the Manatee Center. It is not only target for the northern section of the city, it is intended to capture anybody who can't participate in one or the other. And during this meeting, we had, it was really called Arts and Craft, in my opinion, it was a lot of fun, where we have maps of the entire city, and we asked residents, and just as an example right here, to draw on there, where would I like to ride? Regardless if you live in the north end of the city, you have the opportunity to draw your routes on the south end, and also to the western communities. The other thing that we did is we have a visual preference survey, because not a lot of people understand the technical jargon of an engineer. So we provided samples of facilities, and we asked them to rank from one to five, what would you rather like to see? And we did that both with the mobility study as well. And ultimately, we had a stack, and a stack of surveys that we compiled in the results, and it really tells us, like, what can we do, as far as how do we build out our network? What type of facilities are these, from a feasibility standpoint, and a technical feasibility standpoint, we can provide? And then which one, there is a hierarchy to these facilities, as in, what is the one facility that people would like to see at all time, if we have space for it? And then where are some other challenges that we may lie? So with that, we proposed over 100 miles of network. So as you can see, the existing network is very lacking of what we have, but the future network is really exciting for us, because it's providing over 100 miles of access that we're providing. In addition to providing just the network, we also looked at the cost-benefit of providing these facilities. For example, how do we rank one over the other? And that's really important, because if we have all the funding in the world, we love to build them all at the same time. But we do have to look at the ranking and the criterias for ranking. For example, we looked at population density, how many people are we serving? And then if they have car ownership or not. This is land-use data that we take into consider, and really, it's the equity data that we take into consideration. And again, we normalize the score, and ultimately, we identified 147 projects citywide. And we broke them down to five tiers. The reason for five tiers, because that's, there's really, we looked at, can we build it within our capital plan within that first five years? And that's the intention of it. And then, of course, this is, this data is put in a map, and we do have a, this geodata layer available that looked, we color-coded, so it's easier to see. But for example, some of the Tier One projects that we accomplished already, Olive Avenue, which is from, and York and District Commissioner Lambert, from Gregory all the way up to Southern Boulevard, we constructed it within the, really, the six months, because it was an easy-build type of project. And what we found is so far, by adding just bike facilities, just a stripe on the ground, that you see a reduction of travel speed. So it further validates why we're doing this type of project, and how we have data to support its usefulness. And then, of course, a lot of residents have always asked us, can we move it up with priorities? Absolutely, we have moved projects up in its priority, and primarily, we tried to work with the resurfacing project, how we can co-work together with those type of projects. But more importantly, is working together with the utilities project. You know, Washington is a very large-scale project. We have dedicated some of our gas tax and some of our bike funding into making it a better product than it is already. And then, of course, safety, right? We created a new criteria as a result of this Bicycle Master Plan, and we created a new criteria as a result of the Vision Zero policy that we have, and that's safety. So are there short intervention that we can do, such as enhancing or just creating safer places for people to walk and bike? And that becomes its own criteria itself. And so to really summarize, because 2020 is a very odd year for us, but since we adopted and accepted this plan up to, let's say, the end of 2019, we have accomplished quite a bit, quite many, many projects. 10 miles of bike facilities, which is great, in addition of that, you know, that's a lot to be very, very proud of. We paved over 16 and a half miles of road because of this project and working together with other projects. And then really, what's leveraging, because we've got to think about, how do we make our budget works? And that's the most difficult thing for us, as far as coming out of a pandemic. We know that infrastructure bills are coming out, so we're very reliant on grant dollars. And how do we leverage these grant dollars to make our project whole? So we were awarded, up to this date, over $34 million of grants. And these grants not only pay for bike facilities, I want to emphasize that these grants pays for drainage infrastructure, it pays for lighting, it pays for a lot of trees and streetscape elements that we would not necessarily get with our gas tax itself. So it's not only, even though this is a master plan that provide connectivity, it yields much greater results. The other thing that I did not highlight in this presentation is that we, because we have a master plan, we were able to work with developers when they come in, and when they come in to propose a project, to see how we can improve multimodal safety along their project as well. So that's, that's very exciting. And then lastly, we won awards, I just want to put it out there, low bragging, a little bit of a bragging rights, because we have worked very hard to bring new facilities, such as this project, Spruce Avenue. This is the first-ever advisory bike lane that we had in all South Florida. So I'm very proud to say that in a streets like this, especially what we have redefined what a neighborhood network looks like, it yields quite a bit of benefits. And, you know, we even rode the street with our fire department to see how it would function. So as a result of this, there is a change in national standards that's coming up in January. So there, I just wanted to highlight that. The work that we've done over the past, really, five years, has really set the tone of what could be the future for the city of West Palm Beach. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation. Wynne, can you talk a little bit about the equity aspect of having a comprehensive bike master plan, and could you address that, please?
Absolutely. And I think from equity, we think of, there should be two layers that we think of, it's lateral and it's vertical, right? Vertical as in, what kind of income do you have? And laterals, how do we get people to and from their point of interest? So when we think of, for example, putting in a bike lane in a low-income neighborhood, that's a no-brainer. But it's actually very difficult for us to install the connection that's needed to get to jobs, right? So a lot of time, what you see is there are segments in the network that's very challenging for us to construct. That, and those are major intersections, you know, that's one of the big acknowledge. Crossing a state route or a county road is very different, difficult, but something that we can control as a city is really providing that connection through an existing neighborhood. And so when we, and sometimes I understand that is difficult, because there's a lot of neighbors that says, hey, not in my neighborhood, not in front of my property. But what that does is that prohibits quite a large number of people being able to access their place of interest. I'll give you this example right here, Spruce Avenue, Advisory Bike Lane. We, after the project was constructed, we did receive a handful of complaints from residents that says, I'm losing parking, okay? I'm losing parking, it's very challenging. And that's the balance. But out of a handful of residents, we provided access to anybody who need to use a bike to get to and from work into downtown Northwood. So from an equity standpoint, because there is also, because there's a balance that we provided, we provide access to those low-income neighbors. Because if you think about it, in particular Spruce, is a much better, more comfortable ride for someone to ride to and from work than it is on Broadway as it is right now.
Good, thank you. Questions? Okay, Madam President, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, and thank you, Wynne, for the presentation, and Mayor for bringing this forward. Probably my request for this to be on a work session is primarily because of Spruce. There was an immense amount of engagement prior to with different stakeholders in the neighborhood, and then after implementation, the road looks beautiful, as you can see. But there were a couple of challenges, which I think are learning opportunities for us as we look at this bigger network. As you had mentioned, the context of the street, in this particular neighborhood, throughout history, there's been conversions of garages, we now have Airbnbs, and so it does create this parking challenge. I think one of the things that would be helpful in the implementation of this is signage. The no-parking signage is really important if we are not allowing parking, but also in the interim, if there are available flexible options. So definitely, you know, I think neighbors are in favor of making sure that we're having something, some equitable access, so that we provide biking paths, et cetera. Some of the challenges that neighbors have expressed as well, though, is that because cars aren't parked on the side of the road, speed has increased down the road because there is more roadway available. So to whatever extent we can, we can help mitigate that, I think is really important. But I guess I'm just wondering, in our implementation of this, because you have to do it in segments, and I totally understand that infrastructure costs money, as we're implementing these sections of roadway and kind of communicating to neighbors about what is the larger plan, because you'll hear from a lot of neighbors, now, this is the only street with bike lanes, when really, L.A. Kirksey, just down, down the way, has bike lanes too, which, within the context of that street, functions a lot differently than this street. So are there those, those opportunities, specifically looking at ADA? We have a number of neighbors along this street that had access to their, their home a lot closer, and now have some challenges. So how do we look at those, those implementation challenges as things go forward, and we're looking at our residents changing modes of transportation, going down to one-car households, et cetera, which will naturally thin the process? So can we look at some of those implementations of maybe some flexible rollouts, where we have the hardscape there, but still allow parking until such a time that we have more of a roadway built up? Can we increase our signage? Look at maybe during a project such as this, saying to neighbors, hey, we're redoing a section of the sidewalk, the city could do a curb cut for you if you want to implement your driveway where there once was a driveway. So any considerations like that, that we've kind of looked at, or had some learnings on?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think signage, I want to address your comments and parts. Absolutely, signage is something that is very feasible for us to look and observe the way it's functioned, to see how we can increase it. The other thing that we have received from some neighbors also is that if there's a sign pollution, they don't want too many signs. So I actually looked into, I see you nodding, I also looked into a painted curb program, very similar to SFMTA. It really makes it much easier to understand where you can and cannot park. So we can definitely take a look into something like that to implement. As for ADA access, absolutely, this project, and you have to understand, our facilities, especially if we kind of talk about this particular project, and many city, part of the cities, our facilities, you know, it's a responsibility to always upgrade our facilities to be ADA accessible. Given said that, you have to look at our sidewalks, and we did a large number of sidewalks, every time we do projects now, it has to be free of tripping hazards, and we have to have detectable warning surface to a resident. Now, if a resident would like to park right in front of their house, where they already have a driveway, we can also work with them to see how we can improve their driveway itself. So there are certain things that we can do better, obviously, every time we do a project, there's always a lessons learned. But ultimately, as we're observing this project, when it's done, and post-COVID, we're really going to see how it's being functioned more differently, because right now, there's a lot of people who are staying from home, and so there is a need, more of a need for parking. But really, this phase of our, this year, it's going to come to an end, where we're going to see behavior change. And one behavior that we need to acknowledge that has changed is that more people are biking and walking now than they have ever been before. So absolutely, we can look into those other details to see how we can improve, especially this particular project, or all projects that we looked at.
I appreciate that, and I just want to say for the record, the project is beautiful, neighbors are happy about how the street looks, and I just think it presents an opportunity for us to look at some of those things that we can be, you know, kind of rolling out our implementation as we get our entire network built. Thank you.
So one last thing, last thing I want to say, just because of this project was constructed, we have other, a different neighborhood that asks us to implement very, something very similar to this, and Roosevelt Estates out of all of the neighborhoods, so we're very happy with the product.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Wynne. Mayor, I do have a number of questions, so I'll just start with the first one. Can you describe when the process for determining which style of bike facility goes in? Because I heard you talk about South Olive, and how the green striping has slowed down people driving on South Olive, and I had a house on South Olive, I can attest to that, it was really great to see that. But then I heard Commissioner Shove talk about this here, and we didn't do the green striping. And so I think that that is some confusion that some residents have, is why are we doing it one way on one street and another way on another?
Absolutely. I think, short answer is land use. You have to look at the context, right? In this image right here, to the right, you have a network. Basically, it's point of connection, where do we get from one to the other? The other thing that we did when we were working on the plan is, there are certain section, that's very important, because these are our collector roads, that collects all the traffic in the neighborhood and take it to a point of destination. We have proposed the actual typical section for that, that segment. When it gets into something that staff has a lot of flexibility on, is really what we define as a neighborhood network, right? So before we decide on what is a neighborhood network, it could be a shero on the street, it could be a series of speed bumps, it could be a series of traffic calming devices, which are also speed bumps. But ultimately, when we did this planning, it's not meant to do 90% engineering design, it is a planning document. So staff, as far as technical staff, we have to, when we looked at feasibility, we looked at traffic count before we do anything, we looked at speed, obviously, and then lastly, it's space, because from a, a lot of the projects that we have becomes a geometry challenge for us, right? It really is. Because anytime you move a curb, it costs millions and millions of dollars. We're all very constricted on how much funding we have for each project. So that's how we were able to make a space. I'll give you an example of South Olive. That's a, that project is actually, you know, we designed it in-house, staff designed it in-house, and I was the engineer of record, so we saved quite a bit of funding for that. But what we also saw is that the travel lane there was also 14 and a half, 15 feet, so it doesn't make sense for us to put a symbol or a shero in the ground. It looked at, we looked at feasibility, okay, what if we do a bike lane? So we, we looked at the hierarchy that was voted by the residents, which, where, what would I prefer most? Of course, everybody loved to have an off-site trail, that's really the number one. And then two is really protection, and if you can't get protection, because we have standards that we have to meet, then I'll move down. Can it be a striped, dedicated bike facility? Before I can go down to the lowest, which is just a shero on the road. So our goal is always to provide one above than what the recommendation is. So, and that's why a lot of it is different, has changed. The other factor that we take into consideration outside of speed and volume data is really parking count. So for example, if you have a mile of roadway that, and So, for example, if you have a mile of roadway that, and, and believe me when you say that we count nights, we can, and even sometimes during six o'clock in the morning and keep a whole spreadsheet on it, we do. We look at what does the utilization look like? So if you have a mile of parking and the most that you have is nine cars, there's feasibility there. And we have to make the, the really difficult decision on if we provide safety for people that's riding their bike, or if we provide parking spaces, or how do we provide mitigation for that? So those are the decision process that goes into some of these project. And so that's why, when it comes down to that, the feasibility of the project changed. But we always come back and, you know, report back to the mayor and the commissioner to see what we can do.
You said you had some other questions?
I do, thank you. Thank you for that. And related to that, I know that we have done counts ahead of time, or we know, you know, who's biking, or if a community or that street has a lot of cyclists. But I've heard you say in previous presentations, almost that if you build it, they will come, kind of scenario. Correct me if I'm wrong, but have we done a comparison from before a, a bike facility went in to after to see increased use?
Right, we do not have before count, really is staff restriction. I, I don't want to give excuses for us not to have. But what we do have collected is speed data. Because at this time, and I, I understand that you have to count bike, and that's something that the city will have to continue on a trend to, to count bikes. But what's more important right now, and what residents can understand, is that bike facilities lower travel speed. So that means it's, you know, everybody can understand, it's like, oh, they're speeding on my street. They really can't identify, oh, there's twenty people that bike in the morning to, to work. So we, we, when we count, we count speed data, because we felt that it's something that the community can identify with.
Okay, and is there a standard operating procedure? And I don't know if this is for the engineering department or communications or community outreach. Is there a standard operating procedure for how we're letting the communities know that they're getting these bike facilities? Obviously, this presentation will be aired, you know, I know a number of us are sharing it with others. But what are the next steps?
I would say the next steps for really this is we need to continue what's in our program right now. Outside of, of the five tiers of projects, we do have funding that is dedicated in the penny sales tax for certain type of projects that we need to commit to. When a project is, gets to, and I, I, to a point where there's significant funding involved, I would say more than two million dollars, we typically created a project website that's available on the engineering website of, that gives details of what's next steps are. So ultimately, right now, we have over five projects in the next two to three years that are bike-related. And I think that some of them are really simple, but some of them are very challenging. So I do believe that the, our staff has been engaging the, the community. Sometimes the level of engagement that we provided, when we meet with them for more than seven times, it becomes more challenging for staff to actually function. So when it comes down to it, it's our professional opinion of, here's all the data we collected, here's what we heard. And then, it's really up to the, the commissioner, the mayor and the commissioners to really vote on it. And I think that will give us the level of support that we need to continue. And again, we have to, I, I don't want to say that we don't support biking, because I believe that we all support safety here. But I do think that the ability for the city to continue to obtain federal grants relies on the level of support that we get from our bike master plan.
Final question, Mayor.
Yes.
And I'm glad you brought that up, the other funding, grants. And, and also, you mentioned in your presentation, being creative about other projects that are going on that we, and, and that we were able to pave, on this slide here, over sixteen miles of roads that we otherwise wouldn't have had the money out of our gas tax program to pave. And so that brings me to South Flagler. And I know that the residents who live along there and, and those of us who traverse South Flagler would very much like to see it repaved. And that part of the way we were able to start that discussion is by looking at the bicycle lanes that are on that stretch there. So I don't know if you have any update for us on progress, or if we're able to start talking about how we might be able to move forward.
Yeah, absolutely. South Flagler has always been a, more a feasibility project for us. There are quite a bit, anything on Flagler itself, there is a lot of opportunities. There's this grant called the Sun Trail Grant that comes out every year, and it's specifically for trail. So if you look at our bike master plan and what was intended for Flagler, because I don't know if you remember Commissioner Lambert, before, a few years ago, when we talked about South Flagler, people are saying, nobody's going to bike there anyway, they'll just bike on the sidewalk. What we heard during COVID is there's too many people biking on the sidewalk, get them off the sidewalk. So what can we do? The bottom line is, we're kind of tied on what we can do until we make the decision together as a community and as the mayor and commissioner give us direction. There's grants like that, because it's on the East Coast Greenway. It's, it's on a lot of these other plans that gives us a lot of leverage. There's also a different grant called Safe Routes to School. And Safe Routes to School is a little more flexible. It could be bike lanes, it could be lighting, it could be, you know, sidewalks connection. So there's quite a bit. And what we typically do for a project that challenging is that we have to look at the feasibility. Because when I think of feasibility, I think of how much is it going to cost? Because we still have to function, right? It's not just the capital cost, but staff time to administer a grant project. So how much is that going to cost? And then, we most likely will be able to leverage different type of grant to make the project whole with a little bit of city match funding.
Good.
Yes, Mayor, just a comment that as we look at these projects, I, I am sure a number of us have heard from the residents that they'd very much like to start having conversations about South Flagler and, and working together to be able to move forward on that project.
Thank you, and I think the separate conversation we need to have about South Flagler is the result of the study that we've done, the, the paving study and where that ranks in the priority and, you know, and that's a whole nother presentation. But what got South Flagler, I guess, elevated above other streets which have even more dire paving requirements is the access to funding for the bike lanes. And that's where we ran into a little bit of hiccup. But we, we can continue other conversation. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I know you mentioned, for example, that some of the priorities might change if there were other utility projects going on in a neighborhood. And you mentioned Washington, for example. And I was curious, I've heard from some of the neighbors in, in the Washington area that they're excited about having bike lanes, but they don't feel like there's very much lighting around that area. So I wondered if, when you are moving forward with the bike, biking areas, will there also be sort of lighting that is prioritized in these same areas, just to make sure that everything is as safe as it can be?
Yeah, and I think for this, for that particular project, no, short answer. But I do think that lighting is a safety element that comes, goes hand in hand with the bike network itself. You know, we typically like to look at crash data to, to determine where and when are the crashes are happening. And, you know, citywide, we have Vision Zero data that suggests that crashes are happening in the, actually, in the afternoon. That's where it's most unsafe is in, in the city. So that's something that could be considered. It is not a gas tax or a bike funding option for us. It really becomes very complicated. But again, like I, I would suggest that there are other funding available out there, like Safe Routes to School or just safety funding available that we can go after to make a lot of these projects whole. When we do a lighting project, it's actually simpler if we do it separately, because we don't have the cost of the, of the underground infrastructure. We directional drill, which, you know, they have a big machine that drills underneath everything. And that's typically how we, we build these projects. But again, I don't have information on the lighting funding that's available or how we can make that happen. But I'm sure it's, it's a very important element, so you can please rely that message to the residents. It's a very important element as well.
Follow.
Thank you, I just have two comments. One is that I, you know, I want to thank you so much for, the city as a whole, for taking so much time to think about the, the biking and the equity of it. This summer, when I was working very closely with residents on many food distribution events, we received so many calls asking, you know, if they could walk up or bike up to receive food, because they did not have a car to drive, drive there. And, you know, I am just so proud that we are working on this, and thank you. And Wen, I just want to say to you personally, I, before, many years before I was a commissioner, I worked with you as a PR person on your road safety initiatives and Vision Zero. And I just want to thank you so much. Our city has benefited so much from your innovation and your passion. And I can't even, couldn't even call you when I heard the news, because I just, I'm so heartbroken. But you have set us up for such, you know, a positive, so many positive things that we will, for many years, be thanking you. So I am just happy to know you and wishing you such good luck in the future.
Thank you. I still have more presentations to make, so it's not the last time I'll see you guys.
Okay, well, this is the last time we're going to say all those nice words about. I'm only kidding, I'm, I'm only kidding. Anything else on this item, Commissioners? Okay, and I think Commissioners, and we don't, we're not obviously taking the action, but the, the, the decision we have to make is whether we, as a commission, still support this master bike plan. And if we do, then, you know, certainly some tweaking to community engagement and signage and that type of thing. But the question is whether we are still in support of this master bike plan for a variety of reasons as a whole. And so as we are looking at implementation in different neighborhoods of different sections, you know, we, that, that is, that's got to be our North Star. Either we want this or, or, or we don't. Because i- i- it's not the type of thing where you can halfway do it. You can't say you have a master plan and, and then when it comes to the implementation in a certain portion of the city that's part of the master plan, you say, no, we're not going to move ahead with that project, because the, the, the plan is a hole. Anyway, so as we consider projects, that, let's keep that in mind.